Their families. Lord has blessed this great town of Spring Lake and this whole board and our communities. This is my prayer.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda item number three, approval of the agenda. All the woman, Jackson, I heard you. Uh, before you do that, excuse me, could all of you all just, uh, check your access to make sure. I heard all the woman, Jackson, but I didn't see you light up. Yours is not lighting up.
Kansas.
That one is. So, uh, in view of that fact, when you need to speak, just kind of hit my attention, okay? Thank you.
So the rest of the staff work?
Yes, yours is working. Mayor for ten, uh, yeah. And, uh, uh, no guy, I think he is.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, approval of the agenda, that was, uh, motion in, uh, all the woman, Jackson.
I made the motion that we approve the agenda.
All the woman, Jackson.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded, we, uh, approved the agenda, you heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a sign of nay. Item four, the approval of consent item, all the woman, Sutherland.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent item for the minutes of August the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, as well as the regular meeting.
All the woman, Jackson.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August twenty-fourth meeting. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor, a sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a sign of nay. Uh, item five, did anyone sign up for the public forum?
Yes, sir, we have two people.
Two people, okay.
Do you know who they are and take a look at short signs up?
No, ma'am, it's last minute.
Uh, Ms. McGyver, this is Ms. Hudson with the town. Um, we have you down for speaking for the public forums. And I need you to state your name, address, and then after you do that, you have three minutes.
Oh, and then I would not state my name and address because I do not let you be harassed or get robbed by some Spring Lake police department. So my three minutes to speak and by the government parties, my complaint is, I made a complaint.
Just, just one moment, please, just one moment, please. Uh, Ms. Ma'am, the rule is that you have to state your name and your address in order to speak for the public forum.
For me, sorry, I'm gonna do it this time. My name is Frances McGyver, my address is thirteen O two King Avenue, apartment D, Spring Lake NC two eight three nine zero.
Okay, you have three minutes, you may begin.
Thank you very much. Okay, like I was saying, my complaint is against Spring Lake Police Department. Most of you who are familiar with the press does know I've been having an ongoing problem with that police department starting from two thousand eleven till now. Okay, my complaint initially was against Officer Diaz, officer harm for their conduct. So I received a letter in the mail today from Lieutenant Brown, who I don't understand why he did the investigation when he's a main officer who be arrested. And then what I'm contesting is the chief going there to say, you know, I made a concern against the chief. I never made a complaint against the chief. And like I let them know, Josh, I hope that man named Josh Stein, the govern- the government, he has a copy of every complaint that was made. And I'm gonna call him in the morning and see if I made a complaint on the chief. Every time something happens, I feel like they drag the chief in. He got a guilty conscience about not giving me my body care and so be it. So I'm done. So just now, I would just call the general to follow with him because he wants to have a copy of the complaint set up for me. I let them know, the press got a copy, they do, and I gave a copy to the Spring Lake Police Department, which will be that white cop, officer, still not trying to be late.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms.
Oh, you've been hearing from me again, trust me.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Hello?
Hey, ma'am, this is Ms. Hudson. Um, we have you down for speaking for public, um, hearing for the public.
Yes, Ms. Hudson.
And, um,
Yes.
I need you to state your name and your address, and then after that, you have three minutes.
The Anderson Holly Hills, Spring Lake.
What's the name again?
Well, just state your name and address.
I didn't get the name.
It's so nervous, you call us.
And your name?
Oh, I thought you heard me, Bunny Anderson.
Thank you.
You have three minutes, you may begin.
Okay. Approximately two weeks ago, on the seventeenth, I left home nine thirty, came back four thirty. I was informed that several police were at my door, front, back, side, on my wheelchair ramp, because I have a wheelchair ramp. So I want to know, what is the procedure? I don't know why they came that day, but it was a bunch of them. So like I said, I got home four thirty, I called Spring Lake, who in turn tried to call to the annex. I talked to the detective, do something. I asked him what was going on, he talked to me. I told him, look, I gotta go, you know, I gotta hang up now. And, um, few minutes later, he at my door, him, Diaz, and McIntyre. They asked me to open the door, I told them I got walking issues, that's why I got a wheelchair ramp. I can sit at the window, they insisted on coming. The detective insisted on coming in, so I, just a moment. And he's turning the doorknob before I can go from my window to the door, like my, and then hollering, the door not open. I said, well, give me a moment. So I opened the door, let them in, I'm talking to the detective, but then Steve, which is I called Diaz, buttoning our conversation. I'm having a peaceful conversation with the detective, and Diaz busted in the conversation. I drowned out what he said, but what I said to Diaz was, I said, Diaz, I'm talking with the detective, I don't need you buttoning our conversation. I said, you always button in peaceful conversation. I said, I'm sure the detective can still himself. So no one else said nothing but Diaz, so then Diaz got quiet, and then the detective continues our conversation. Then the detective, um, said to me, well, ma'am, um, and I'm sitting just like three streets from you, so I'm sitting pretty much in the middle of them, at my front door.
Ms. Anderson, I don't mean to interrupt you, I apologize, but what, could you just state your topic of concern and?
My concern is how many police is supposed to come to your house, knock on your door? They insist on going into my bedroom, which I do not allow. I said, you have a warrant, so I want to know, you know, what are my rights as a homeowner, as a person? Then, two days later, they come to arrest me, and I'm trying to get dressed, and Ugly's trying to look at me, he said, tell me I can get dressed, because I had on shorts, you know, with holes in it. I said, can I put on some long pants? Somebody said yes, and then Ugly trying to look at me, get dressed. That's why people talk about them being perverts. And then as I'm going out the door, after they arrest, as, as, while they're trying to arrest me, as I'm going out the door, they see me with my papable, they said, you don't need to get papable, I took papable down. I took my blood with the medicine. And I tried to get some water, you don't need no water, slam my refrigerator door. Okay, put the handcuffs on me while I'm in the truck. Then they go, I got handcuffs on my arm, it's attached to the door, they're gonna smash the door open. I said, did you forget you got handcuffs on me? Because that hurt my hand. So I want to know, you know, what is the procedure?
Okay, thank you so much.
So I'll get a letter or something?
Yes, you'll get a response.
Yes, she will, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank y'all.
Yes, thank you for coming. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Item number six, uh, the two thousand, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen audit, Mr. Grissom.
Good evening.
Hello.
All right, my name is Lee Russell. Trying to deal with this mask. Um, here to present the audit fiscal year end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. What I'm gonna do is give you a brief outline, I'm gonna go over quick audit definitions, required communications, financial statement highlights, some summary comments and discussion on findings, and then some graphical information. And you guys can interrupt at any time if you want.
And you start on page?
Um, no, I'm not gonna go on the report.
Oh, okay.
And there will be, it's in the graph that you should have access to. If we need to report, I'll, I'll make reference.
Okay, thanks.
And I should cover everything that you need to know before.
Sure, thanks.
All right, first of all, um, this is June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, so this is a really, this, this audit was really late this year. Um, due to the previous fiscal year, that was over a year late, everybody probably knows about at this point. Um, we knew in last, the presentation of last year, that we would have findings this year because of, basically, the hurricane, and then your, your prior finance officer kind of left you in a tough spot, had some messes to clean up this fiscal year. So a lot of the findings this year were predictable, um, and more about the, the previous finance director's lack of, whatever word you want to call it, not doing his job or whatnot, so, um, you'll see some of that as we, we go along. So this audit, we, we issued fiscal year eighteen in February of this year, February twenty-eight, two thousand twenty. We issued this current audit we're talking about today on August tenth, so about six months between this audit to the next. So, once we got started on the fiscal year nineteen audit, Gay Tucker, and Daniel Gerald, and Terry, and, and the staff there did a good job once we got going on the nineteen audit. So, um, so, uh, we had, there was no new accounting policies during the year, we had no disagreements with, with management, and we did not consult with other, uh, auditors or accounting firms during the course of engagement. Um, just quick financial highlights, which we'll, we'll go through some of this stuff in graph form, but, uh, total assets, twenty-two point five million dollars. Total liabilities, thirteen point seven million dollars. Net position, nine point eight million dollars. And that was actually an increase of a hundred and eighteen from last fiscal year. Uh, your general fund decreased by eight hundred and twenty thousand for fiscal year nineteen. Uh, much of that was attributed to budgeted expenditures related to splash pad, as well as those land purchases, um, made near the end of the fiscal year, related to the nonprofit entity, which we will touch on later. So, um, two of the major takeaways that I, I would like to, um, point out and emphasize is your general fund's been decreasing, which I discussed it in the last presentation, which, you know, from my standpoint, that's what I would be concerned with, which I'd like to convey to you guys, and you'll see it in graph form. But your reserve and your general fund balance has been decreasing, um, over the last three or four years. So, um, definitely, I would try to make adjustments for that if you have not already. Um, the enterprise funds did really well this year. Uh, water and sewer sanitation, stormwater, uh, increased by a hu- a total of two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So those funds have done really well, it's the general fund, um, again, is, is the ones that, uh, you know, that I'll be the most concerned with. Uh, tax collects, tax collection percentage is really strong. Um, there were no, there was no material debt added during the fiscal year. And again, we'll talk a little bit, I'll show you the graph, so you'll see a little bit more financial information towards the end. Um, any questions so far? All right, uh, summary comments and findings that I'll go over. Uh, the three findings, one was the bank reconciliations were not, uh, they were over twelve months behind. And that's in the very end of the audit report in the compliance section, so last few pages. Uh, you can see Mr. Gerald had responded to the, the different reasons, and he can, he can always comment on it now if he wanted to, but, uh, the town, uh, there was a accounting position that was let go, I think it was at the beginning of eighteen or the nineteen fiscal year. And then, of course, your prior, uh, finance director left, so you're, you're kind of short basically two positions. So that created some issues with, with getting behind on task. The other recommendation I would make, I mean, again, the general fund is concerned, the other one is considering additional staff if, if, if the funds permitted. You know, because I, I mean, Gay Tucker, I have a lot of faith in her, she's done a great job, she really hustled this, this audit, but the question is, is there, does she have enough help? Which that would be something I would recommend, but if, you know, of course, if the money's not there, it's not there, but something I'd consider. Um, segregation of duties is still a concern. Um, just because the interim finance director, who's Gay Tucker, also did payroll and, and various, um, duties which didn't give you the proper controls that you need. And again, that, that's a lot to do with just being short, you know, the number of finance staff. And the last one is, which would also be a concern, is, uh, going over budget. So that's been a, that's been an issue in, in prior fiscal years, and it was another concern this fiscal year, is, um, you know, and, and I've talked a lot with Gay, I think, I really do think she knows what she's doing, and she knows what the issues are and how to correct them, just a matter of, you know, doing that, moving forward, but, um, that, that's the third finding. Any, any questions?
Yep, all the woman, Sutherland, and then Mayor for ten.
Thank you, Mr. Grissom. Finally coming to give me the presentation, I'm accustomed to six months in, and we're so far behind. As you stated, the finance director, whatever, he's not here to defend himself, but when he was here, I was asking him more questions, why come it wasn't, this audit had not been presented? I constantly asked him, it is in the minute, why come it has not been presented as well as you presenting us with the, the findings of your firm? So, um, again, when he was here, we was already behind. He's not here to defend himself, so of course, uh, you're presented now. And, uh, the short coming of the fund, general fund decreasing, which has stated that in, um, LGC's letters as well, and, uh, are you aware of anything about the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Do you know anything about that?
Are you talking about the decrease in fund balance?
Is it eight hundred and fifty dollars, eight hun- eight hundred and fifty thousand?
Eight hundred and twenty thousand.
Eight hundred and twenty? Okay, thank you.
But I did look at the, and I verified in the minutes, I mean, the, the majority of that money, although there were some budget problems and spending over budget, which is part of it, but a lot of it was splash pad, which, I mean, I, I, it looked like, from everything I saw, that, that was all approved by the board. So some of this, a lot of this was planned, some of it not planned, but, um, and then there was a land purchase towards the end of the fiscal year that was, uh, three hundred and three thousand dollars, which I think that's potentially reimbursable at some point as well.
Right.
So. But again, the, the downside of a late audit is a lot of this stuff, I mean, Gay Tucker's brand new, your, your finance director, she didn't really have a prayer.
That's how I was a finance director was here.
Right, right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mayor for ten, and then all the woman, Jackson.
Hi, since, uh, twenty fourteen, our fund balance has dropped by about one million, but our debt has also dropped by about three million. So doesn't that mean we're in a better financial situation now?
That, that is, that is a factor, but you do want to have cash in reserve in your general fund, that, that's generally a best practice, and what the LGC would recommend. Uh, you're currently, from a percentage standpoint, you're, you're, you're just short of two months in reserve, and, and that's what they're really shooting at, you have two months in reserve, so you just need to build that up.
Okay.
But it's really just the continuous trend, and then due, due to the turnover, it's kind of a concern more from an audit standpoint.
Okay, do you know what the number is for, um, how much we need?
Um, I would have to calculate that.
Okay.
I can't do it right off the, off the fly. But it's essentially, I can show you how it's calculated, let me do that real quick. If you're interested. Let's pull the, uh, report out, it would be, it's page thirteen on the report. In that calculation, you see the, uh, fund balance and, and the general fund following towards the bottom. You see an unassigned fund balance of one point, one point one four million, do you see that?
Yeah.
That number right there is the unassigned number that, that's, uh, you take that number, and then you flip over to page fifteen. You take that number and you divide it into the, the eight point one million dollars of total expenditures in the general fund. So it's a function of those two numbers, so if your, your expenditures are changing year to year, that would, that would change that percentage as well. So if you want to come up with sixteen percent, you could just play around with those numbers. So you need to, really need to unassign to either increase or your expenditures to decrease. So it's a function of those two.
Thank you.
I say sixteen percent.
Yes, sir.
Oh, the, uh, uh, Mayor for ten is finished, asking, asking his question about the, uh, fund balance, which I guess came from this first year, is that right? And then, Mr. Grissom took us to, uh, what was necessary to answer his question with page thirteen and page fifteen.
Did he say where we were, with our presence, just on the, uh, on, on the graph?
And, and we will get to that when we go to the graphs, I'll go through that again. We'll see.
All the woman, Jackson.
Um, Mr. Grissom, so basically for the general fund, what we need to do is make sure that the projects that we have don't oversee what we have in there? Is that what you're saying? And basically in a nutshell?
It's, it's essentially, you would want your revenues over your expenses to be, uh, to add to fund balance, you'll need more, you know, revenues over the expenditures for the next fiscal year to cover it.
And this, I'm sorry, let me.
Oh, no problem, go ahead.
And this amount, when you got listed, I'm sorry, because I'm, this is all new to me, unassigned, does that mean money that we don't have anywhere for it to go?
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, okay. Uh, and thank you.
And it's, it's almost like, uh, you look at personal finance between, you know, family, and it's almost, you think in terms of how much money you squirrel away in case an emergency happens. So it works the same with the town.
And thank you so much for all the hard work you did with all the obstacles that you had, so I appreciate that so much, thank you.
You're welcome, I appreciate you saying that.
Okay, so you may continue, there are no more questions yet.
Okay, um, and Mr. Gerald was nice enough to include me in on one of the phone calls for the SLA entity, which, um, that is not in the financial statements, but I do expect for fiscal year twenty, just because the financial dependence between the nonprofit and the town, that we're likely to see that as a separate, um, discreetly presented component unit. So that will be new in fiscal year twenty. And, and if you haven't done that already, the town's obligated to, uh, consider appropriating money on a, on a routine annual basis to this, to that entity. The only other thing I wanted to point out regarding that is, I'm not aware of an audit requirement for that SLA, but it is something that, you know, you possibly want to consider. All right, let's go to the graphs. Okay, this first graph is analysis of fund balance governmental funds. And these do not, these do not include the water sewer and the, the other enterprise funds. Um, back in two thousand fourteen, you're looking at total fund balance of two point eight nine million dollars. Uh, this restricted fund balance over there on the, is the red column on each of these graphs, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, and then you can see, the fifteen and sixteen year went all the way up to three, around three point, three point five, three point six million. And then from fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, you can see the downward, downward trend. Which on most of these graphs, you'll, you'll see something similar, especially with the general fund is involved, and the general fund is in this, in this graph. Let's go to the next page. And, and very similar as far as, uh, you can see the increase in fifteen, sixteen, and then, and going on down. This is the percentage that we were talking about earlier, remember up to sixteen percent. So, so each month is, uh, you can see at the very bottom, it's eight point three three percent. So if you take any of these numbers at the bottom and we're divided by eight point three three, you'll get the number of months. So a hundred percent would be a full twelve months in reserve, so this page two represents the emergency fund and the general fund. And you can see the continuous decrease, and I, I'd imagine the local government commission will send a letter. I, I think the fact that it's below sixteen percent, I would anticipate that, because that's usually what they recommend. Let's go to the next page, page three. This is, this is total cash. So you can see total cash in, in fiscal year fifteen hit the peak at, at almost five point six million. You can see kind of over the last several fiscal years, the decrease. And again, you did point out that there was, there was a lot of debt being paid off as well, so that's factored in this as well. So currently, at the end of fiscal year, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, we're looking at four million dollars of cash. And there is one metric on the, um, government-wide financials, if you take the current assets divided by the current liabilities, you get the current portion, it is at four, so the, the, the town does have a four to one ratio of current assets to current liabilities. So the, so the cash, the, the town does have current liabilities to pay, you know, the short-term li- uh, debt of the town, so. Let's go to page four, this is outstanding debt. And this is just as you were pointing out, you can see all the way in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, nine point four million dollars, and, you know, over the last several years, it's, uh, paid off over, you know, three million dollars of debt. So that's a lot of where the cash is going as well. Let's go to page five, fund balance, general fund. Again, we've already hit on this multiple times, but, you know, similar graph, uh, the peak is two thousand sixteen, the general fund, fund balance was three point four million dollars, and now it's at one point, almost one point eight million dollars. And then the next page, this is the unassigned fund balance. Uh, very similar, very similar trend, two thousand sixteen at the peak was, uh, two point eight seven million dollars, and then now fiscal year nineteen at one point one million dollars. Property tax revenues, the next page, page seven. Uh, this, this has been fairly stable over, over this period of time, so, and then the same thing on the next page, page eight. Um, very stable tax, property tax collection percentage. Let's go to page nine. This is your enterprise combined net position, and this is your, your water sewer sanitation, all your enterprise-type funds. Um, in two thousand eighteen, there was an implementation of a new accounting standard, which that's the big decrease there, that's nothing the town did wrong. Uh, so you really, there's a new baseline, starting with eighteen, so from eighteen to nineteen, there was around, I think, a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase, so. And let, let me turn your attention to the findings, I briefly touched on that, just so you can see where they are, it's on page eighty-seven.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Um, on page six, the unassigned fund balance, where it was up on fourteen and down in, in nineteen, so the money that is gone, we have it placed somewhere else, is that, is that correct? Like you, and, and tell me if I'm saying it wrong, that you have a line item for the money, the decrease in the money? That means that we took it and put it somewhere else?
That's correct, that's correct, that's correct.
Where do we put it?
I mean, it's, it's like he was mentioning, it'd be, uh, debt, but it, it's splash pad or capital outlay expense, like purchasing the land of three hundred thousand this year. Uh, I mean, it's, it's a variety of factors over the years. And some of it is not spending within the, but some of it's not spending within the budget, you know, honestly, I mean, that's part of it. Part of it's budget, part of it's not budget. So I would definitely see, want to see a, 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 following the budget better going forward.
If you, um, if you wanted to, like, if you really wanted to put a needle to it, I mean, fine print, we could always go back and see where it went. It's not, it's not just out there gone, but we could actually go and say, this part went here, this part went there.
That's right. One thing I had thought about, I talked to the mayor about this, um, a few months ago, it, maybe coming up with a, an audit committee or subcommittee, potentially to, to, instead of just me coming up here and you guys sort of remembering, sort of forgetting what I say, you know, maybe you can meet. You know, maybe you can meet twice a year or something. Talk to another municipality, see how they do it. That would be one thing you could look into.
That sounds good.
But I, I just real quickly on page, let's go to, what is it, eighty-seven? These are where the findings are. And again, uh, two thousand nineteen and one, there's one, two, and three. Surrogation of duties, excess of expenditures over appropriation, and then bankrupt ancillations on the, on page eighty-eight. And then on the next page, you can see the town's response to each of those. And Mr., Mr. Gerald helped type those up and he, you know, he's the name on those, uh, he's the contact person on each of those.
Just repeat finding, in order for us not to have repeat finding, what is your strongly recommendation?
I think the audit committee sounds like a good idea.
Right, I know it is several municipalities does have audit, uh, individuals, and I think it could be something that.
And I, and I think the timeliness that the, the audit being late, if there was an audit committee, it would have stayed on top of that a little bit more too. But one other thing, uh, the hurricane was hit at the beginning of this fiscal year, in September of eighteen. So I, I didn't want to fail to mention that. So that was in this fiscal year, at the beginning of fiscal year, first quarter.
So do you see us having any, I'm sorry, ma'am. Do you, do you see us having any problems with the pandemic, with the, with the audit being off again?
Um, and, and the audit is due this year in January, the end of January? There shouldn't, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any issues with that.
Because I know they made a lot of reference to, we couldn't do this because of the hurricanes, so the pandemic shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue. Okay.
And we're going to stay on top of it.
I mean, these hurricanes were really unusual, you know, for a lot of clients and I, yeah. I mean, it was a valid excuse, maybe taken a little too far, you know, in the past.
So, uh, your, your real assessment is now that, uh, the nineteen audit is behind us. You've identified the three things that need to be worked on and approved. And so now the twenty, twenty twenty audit is due, what is the date that it, it needs to be to you?
Uh, it's submitted to the local government commission, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Is to have it to the LGC. So when do you need?
We need to begin the audit within, let's see, what's today, uh, September?
September the, uh, fourteen.
I would say November the latest, beginning of November the latest.
Can you give us a date circle? November one, November thirty-two.
November one, we're.
November one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. November one, that, that's a reasonable goal.
And, and just know the mayor stayed on me more than I would have cared to hear from him. During this, uh, or stayed on the staff as well, to get this out in a timely manner.
And, and one good thing is.
I don't miss your texts, though, I mean.
Well, what we're doing is playing catch-up.
Right, right.
And for future reference, we're going to make sure. So we, what we've done is try to get this behind us and you in front of us, and then we presented it to, uh, you presented this to LGC, the twenty nineteen. Uh, so then the twenty twenty, you just stated, you need to have it no later than November, what?
To get started, November first.
November first, twenty twenty, thank you.
Mr. Gerald.
We're, we're called up.
Right.
So when I came here, they were late. And now we're calling all.
Called up.
So now we're on schedule to be on time for the twenty.
Okay, so, so, so work, and, and this is probably not even a, a good question, but work has already been done now to move us toward this November first submission date. Okay, I, I, I kind of felt that, but I guess it had to be said anyway. Okay, unless there are no other questions from the board? Uh, I think they say in the army, we got our marching orders. And we're going to be in what, lockstep is what they call it?
Right, right.
Uh?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you.
One man, one sound, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, we are now down to seven, eight. Resolution authorizing the town manager to negotiate the private sale of real property, Mr. Charleston.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to ask Captain Long to present the, the, the background of the resolution.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hello.
Uh, this resolution is requesting.
Excuse me, can, can, can you, uh, get the mic please, back your camera.
This resolution is requesting the Board of Aldermen to authorize the town manager to negotiate a private sale of real property. The addresses of the two tracts of land is one 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 zero West Manchester Road, Spring Lake, and one six three five Artillery Trail, also in Spring Lake. The private negotiated sale is requested pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, one sixty-eight dash two sixty-five through two sixty-seven and two, two seventy-nine, which authorize negotiated private sales by the town for public use. And along with requesting authority for the private negotiated sale of this, we request the town manager be authorized to sign the deed and any other documents in order to consummate the sale. And we request authorization to publish a required notice of private sale in the Fayetteville Observer. This is an action item, so we would need a motion and a vote.
All right, woman, sir.
Just asking, because I did read the resolution and what it states here, but, uh, for this location, the Manchester Road, as well as the sixteen thirty-five Artillery Trail, how much is this property worth? And how much are we asking for? And what, I mean, we just, we don't know anything, and then it's a deed's going to be sold, so I'm just saying.
So this property is part of the property that was mentioned by Mr. Grissom, for an economic development project, and.
That was mentioned by Mr. Grissom?
Yes, the property is acquired last year by the town. This is part of that set. Um, if you need further, uh, documents to draw your memory.
It says up here, it says now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the town of Spring Lake, North Carolina. So it's just that, I'm just.
It's just authorized.
I don't know. How much it's worth and all that and.
This is authorized and private negotiated sale. This is a matter that's subject to the economic development policies. And, uh, it's not unusual not to have the, the amount included in the resolution for all these reasons.
Well, will the board know? How much it's worth and what's going to be sold and who signed the deed? I mean, we're authorized, but I don't know what I'm authorized on.
Right.
And the amount, and where does it go once it's sold? What, what, what we do with the funds? What, what are we doing? I mean, I'm just saying it's no amount here.
Well, the, the, what's done with the bonds is what the town only does. But we seek that it continues, you know, for the sale of any other property. But in this, in this matter, this is an economic development matter. This is something that you guys have authorized and timed out.
Okay, is this off Manchester Road in that area?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm trying to get to. And those two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's what's, that's what's mentioned in the resolution.
Those partials that we were still.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's leaving a little bit, because I don't know, you know, where they are, but it was, okay.
All right, okay, all right, all right, all right.
I was just trying to.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And let me ask further questions, uh, of the Board of Aldermen, uh, who is this, the facilitator?
Yeah.
That, uh, would like a, a motion.
Yes, sir.
In the board.
Okay, well, you heard it, we need a motion, and I say. Mayor Proten.
Uh, I move that we authorize the resolution, authorizing the town managers to negotiate the private sale of real property. That's the one.
All right, woman, gal.
Can I second that motion?
It has been moved, the second we authorize the resolution, twenty, seven. You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All right, please, sign a aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the sign of nay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. McNeil, and I will sign, uh, a better copy of this, Miss Hudson. I marked up on mine, I'll, I'll sign it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Um, this is a memorandum of understanding, um, from NC Commerce, the Main Street Program. This is a community assessment, uh, that identifies the community assets, economic drivers, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Um, and this is the first step, um, in our strategic plan moving forward for economic development. So I would need a, a, a motion to be able to move forward, uh, to approve this MOU. Um, we'd like to get started, uh, by the end of September and report back out, uh, virtually, um, just before Thanksgiving.
All right, woman Jackson.
Um, Mr. McNeil, um, as I called you earlier to ask you about this, I just want to make sure it's clear. When we, if we agree to this, um, memorandum of understanding, we're not putting in money to have this done after we've already put in a lot of money before to do the same thing over again. And you stated to me that since it's virtual, if it costs anything, it'd be a little bit or nothing. But this memorandum doesn't say anything about cost. So before any cost is done out of here, you will come back to the board with it.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
And, uh, we're doing everything virtually.
Thank you.
All right, woman, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Mr. McNeil, for the work you do and, uh, always trying to keep this on a professional level, even on tax purposes, sir. Looking on, uh, number three, on page nine. This is a few questions, this is new. It says the center on page three, page nine, it's virtual, which you made it, I think this is great, I think this is, uh, good. Uh, the participants of the project and the corporation, and then it states the center and all participants. Now normally when we have a committee or a, a commission of individuals, as you stated, we should have one for a budget. Is it a certain number of individuals? I know you said they, they do this in other municipalities, but where the town of Spring Lake wants to get involved is virtual. And it says the center and all participants. Can you elaborate when they say the center? It says electronics.
So the, the center would be, um, the, the Main Street Program and the, uh, uh, North Carolina Department of Commerce. When they refer to the other participants, those would be the key stakeholders. So it'd be very similar for those who were on the board or around in two thousand eleven. Um, it's very similar to that. If, if you weren't around, uh, there was a breakdown of, uh, key stakeholders. So it could be, uh, Fort Bragg leadership, it could be the Board of Aldermen, it could be, uh, different department heads here, uh, industry and business and the citizens. So we want to get every, every, uh, stakeholder involved. And with Zoom, one of the things you can do is as you have all those participants, you could actually have separate breakout sessions within Zoom, uh, within that same meeting, and then you can reconvene and come back into a larger group. Um, that's, that's one of the beauties of, of using Zoom. But it, it would be very similar to what, what, uh, took place in two thousand eleven, it would just be virtual.
The EDC, we used to have, and we used to have the meeting, and we used to go to the meeting. Because I do have here, uh, the center and who does it consist of, who wasn't when, we did state two thousand eleven. Also in paragraph four, the responsibility and deliverance of service throughout the state, need you to elaborate, and then the turnover, budget reduction, and other for sin. And then it says, if the individuals are not able to participate, then you will begin to get another status and the replacement of staff and the resources can be secured.
One, one of the things, one of the things that they refer to, uh, in that as well is that to make sure everyone had a, um, has an internet connection as well.
Right, it says internet connection, then it says here, in rare cases, when every specialized staff skilled or unable to be replaced. Then it says you have to get somebody that's skilled, and if that individual has started out, if something happens to them, how you replace them. And then I had on there, who vet the center for Spring Lake. So have we already started getting some individuals to serve on this committee or the center or the organization or the corporation that the state's here?
What would happen is, um, once the, um, MOU is signed, uh, the structure would be very similar to, um, the two thousand eleven structure, where you have different groups, um, that come together and actually give their input. And, and that input would help us determine, uh, what we call the SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so, um, as I said, I, I feel like it's very important because there's some good work that was done in two thousand eleven, but obviously we, we have some new ta, uh, new challenges, um, in, in the current state of affairs, especially with COVID-nineteen. So, um, I think it's time to sort of kick things off, um, as a first step for our strategic plan and our Main Street program.
So again, how many people are we looking for for Spring Lake? I know we had an EDC individuals, so my question is, to get started, do, who vets them and who gets it started for Spring Lake, even do this virtual?
Well, it, it, it would certainly be, uh, the board would have input as you did in two thousand eleven. Um, the facilitator would, would be, um, NC Commerce and the Main Street Program. Um, but the overall objective is to include, um, every single key stakeholder, especially the citizens. Um, you know, to give their input, the industry, the businesses, uh, the military.
So how do we know who's going to be on it? Who's going to serve?
Well, what would happen, what would happen is that it would be facilitated through, uh, NC Commerce and the Main Street Program, and then the board would have input and see the, the formulation of each group that's asked to come to the table and, and actually give their input. So the, the board would be involved every step of the way of every group that's, that's being asked to give their input.
Uh, Ms. McNeil, and the name of the, of the person that's located in Fayetteville, what is her name again?
Grace Lawrence.
Grace Lawrence. So in our likelihood, she will be the coordinator for this effort and for this work.
Well, it would be her and her staff.
Yes, right, right, yeah. And she's already on board with economic development and Department of Commerce. And she's been here in Fayetteville for a while, from what I understand.
Yes, sir, that's correct. So we would just need a, a motion to be able to move forward, uh, to sign the MOU and to get started, um, in this process.
All right, woman Jackson.
I make a motion that we, um, agreed to sign the MOU, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Hold on.
And next to the motion, I just want to make sure that, that the, uh, the motion increase of flexibility to address a couple of minor tweaks.
Yes. Did you get that?
What'd you say?
Uh-uh.
I just want to make sure that the motion has flexibility just to address a couple of minor tweaks.
How do we know what they are? You gonna bring it back towards the tweet?
No, 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 uh, a minor tweak means it's not material to the approval, which is, is a simple minor correction.
I'm, I'm gonna kind of agree with Ms. Thudman, what is minor? Because when we go to agree to this MOU, that means that if something happens, we can go back to the paperwork and see what we agreed to.
I want to, I want to connect to that.
Okay.
Typically what happens with local government and companies that are doing hot office resolutions, what you really approve, approve the document after form, such as this minor non-material thing. For instance, if they needed to do the typographical or, or anything like that, it, it is as usual as they have longed this place. So you'll, sometimes you'll get documents where there's a bit of unusual adoption that's to form, which basically means the, uh, the material terms are in the document. It might be a name that might be wrong if you want to correct it, but it doesn't change the outcome, uh, of, or the intent of the document, and it's not necessary to bring it back. And that's, I mean, this is the usual custom everything that's been all the time. So we wouldn't be changing anything that's been presented by, by economic development, because I need a, a, a small tweak that I want to talk to the board.
I appreciate you clearing that up because moving forward, I don't, I mean, just to be frank, we want to know what's going on. There's just too much stuff going on that includes the board, and we don't know. And it's because we said, yeah, we don't know, so we're going to be strict and tight on what goes on. So if you're telling me that the minor tweaks is a name front, a name, or something like that, I don't have a problem with that. But anything major, I need to know.
Well, and, 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 and I gotta say this to you just so we're real clear. Once you adopt, uh, a resolution, that doesn't necessarily already change it anyway.
Okay.
Okay, but what we're saying here is that, I said, it's just, we're gonna like make a minor tweak, but just to put you on notice that that might be the case. But it won't change the intent of the, of the contract.
Right, right.
Or the supplements or something, but.
Right. So I need to make the motion that we, um, approve it with minor tweaks? And, is that it?
As necessary.
Maybe, maybe subject to non-material, um, adjustments? Non-material, okay.
You want to make the motion, sir?
You make the motion, sir.
Okay, um, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding and community assessment for the town of Spring Lake, subject to non-material adjustments.
All the woman Jackson?
I second that motion.
You heard the motion? All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay? Uh, and you all got the wording, even though I could not repeat it. Would you, uh, okay, you got the wording?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Okay, the item, uh, seven C, the board should consider changing the start time of our work session meeting. That is the just meeting, the first meeting of, of the month, to change that it's time. Uh, all the money, oh yeah.
I've got a suggestion, seeing how there's only one person that has a full-time job here. And I said, we, uh, check with Mayor Protan and see what he has to say.
Mayor Protan?
I'm pretty flexible, I can do from six o'clock if everyone wants that.
And the consideration is to change this meeting to begin at six. Is that correct? Or, or whatever the board agrees to. I mean, I'm, I, I, I don't work anymore, so. What, what time? Get a, uh, let's just, before we get a motion, let's just, uh, talk about what time is con- is convenient. Five thirty, six o'clock?
Six o'clock, do with me.
Okay.
I have a full-time job, but it's six o'clock.
All right, let's get a.
Over four times.
Let's get a motion. All the woman Jackson?
I make a motion that we change the start time of our work sessions to six o'clock PM.
All the money, oh yeah.
I second that motion.
It's been moved, and seconded, we change the, uh, work session to six o'clock. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor, sign, sign aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Question.
Question.
Uh, I think, just to make sure we're all on the same track, we may have town clerk or our assistant remind us in the near future about six o'clock versus seven.
I agree. What do you think?
And, yeah, and also the signs too, that are, are pretty much around town, it says, say.
Since we talked about the signs, can you talk about the signs I had requested? And it was thirty-five people out here, uh, at the last meeting, and they still, people still asking when they're gonna be able to come in, because they see those signs. Since we talking about the time, so. Since we talking about the changing of the time, but. Just going to work session. We had a work session before we here, but work session.
We'll modify the signs, since we, we're in the process of modifying for the state, but we'll modify the signs.
Okay, so when we modify, we had, I had talked about that in the last meeting, we're gonna modify them to also let the citizens know that they're asking questions, they're calling. Just like we had, had, uh, Mrs. Princes tonight to come in, she came here to get in, it was thirty-five people after that last meeting, they wanted to come in, it's about the, um, inspection department. So, my question again, I asked that last week. This is a work session, so we can work it out, and then we'll come back to, even though it's not on the agenda, that's what a work session is for us to talk about. Um, we're gonna modify the signs that include the time for this second meeting, as well as letting folks know that they can't come in, the citizens know that they're not, this meeting is not open for the citizens yet. Do we have a time, or when they're gonna be open, uh, when? This is a work session, so that's why I'm asking these questions to the, as of meeting. That's why we said we're gonna have the work session.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we'll modify the signs, and, um, like I said, we're following due diligence of the, um, state of North Carolina.
Okay, because we are, we have opened up the gyms, and we had two point five oh instead of three, the governor had presented, so we're farther along than we was at, uh, the one. So my question is, when will it be open for the citizens? And even to have it?
Ho- ho- hold on, excuse, ho- hold on, hold on. Now, now, we did have the agenda posted, addition and deletion in a timely manner. And, and if we don't follow what we said, we can't expect anybody else to do it. All the woman Jackson?
Um, I think it would be cost, I think it would be too much to have signs put up saying that we're not open, and then tell her I have to do it when we open. Why can't we just have signs at the door? And put it on the Facebook page, or on the Spring Lake website? And, or even, I don't know if it would be costing just to put a flyer in the thing, the town of Spring Lake meetings will be closed until further notice. And then when we open back up, we do the same thing and let them back up, but to actually have them printing on signs and tell her I have to get them done again would be, to me, a waste of money. That's just my opinion.
And that's what I stated last meeting, just take the signs down until we open, instead of putting all that and having them modified. That's what I had stated at the last meeting, but they said they want to continue to put them up, and I think they were still up. So that, I've stated the same thing.
But the signs being up is just letting everybody know we're having a meeting.
Right.
And, you know, they need to know that we're still in section. But if we put a sign on the door, like if you bet a sign to, to night or tomorrow, put it on the door and just let it sit there, or maybe something that the water department, when they come pay their door, put it on their window, that the town of Spring Lake meetings will be closed until further notice because, um, of, of the COVID, and it's understanding. And then maybe the town website, maybe we start putting it on the Spring Lake website, because a lot of people watch that website. Uh, I mean, the Facebook page, maybe a week prior, remember that the town of Spring Lake is closed until further notice, instead of actually putting it on the sign. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen.
Hello, brother.
I am here to present, um, a plan for, a plan and strategies for transitioning to reopen Recreation, um, Center and all its operations evolving around the Rec- Recreation Department. Um, so, as you know, and, and you are aware, um, we have already entered the Safer at Home, or Phase two point five of the Safer at Home, um, Safer at Home, uh, initiative that was put in effect on September fourth, twenty twenty by the governor, Governor Cooper. Um, and so I'm just gonna lay out how this impacts parks and recreation. And I am going to, um, give you guys some strategies, some guidelines, some restrictions that we may face going in, because I know you guys maybe wanted to make a decision on opening up. Um, I don't know how soon, but you guys maybe wanted to make a decision. And so, if we do, I'm just here to lay out some guidelines, restrictions for doing so. Um, so, and I have compiled, we have compiled and collected data from various sources. Um, I didn't lean on my own expertise. Um, we have, uh, got collected data and did research from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, which is a collective group of a hundred agencies, which is, uh, Town of Spring Lake is a part of, um, where we get together and gather our ideas, um, collectively through, um, our agencies throughout North Carolina, um, under Recreation and Parks. So, and we also use the CDC. Um, we got, we collected data from them as well to kind of give you guys an understanding or of what, what's to come if we do decide to open up. Um, you go to the next slide. Um, so, here are some youth activities and sports that are, um, pretty, they are low-risk, low-risk sports, um, rela- relative to COVID nineteen. So these are some of the sports that, that we can, um, if we do decide to open up, we can go ahead and do, um, for participate, kids can participate, uh, citizens can participate in. Um, and the ones that, that is relative to Spring Lake is dance, um, which is, uh, five or, five or less participants. That's considered just a regular dance, uh, program. Tennis, and pickleball. Those are the only ones that we really, um, have current programs. And, you can go to the next slide. And so here's some moderate-risk sports. Um, they're limited to outdoor participation, and you have to have face covering. Um, and so, we really, we could do, uh, soccer, baseball, softball, if we wanted to, um, um, utilize these sports, or open up these programs. And so here's some high-risk sports that they're not, uh, the DHHS has recommended, um, non-participation really, on the competitive level. So our football, um, basketball, and group dance, which is five or more, or, well, more than five, excuse me, more than five, um, and competitive cheer, that's relative to our, to Spring Lake. So those programs would be deemed, um, non-participational or, mm, high-risk uh, on the competitive level. Now, you, we can open it up for camps and clinics or individual sessions at a small group. Um, but as far as competition, leagues, things like that, tournaments, um, it's recommended that we do not open up for that because of the, um, it's very, uh, high contact, um, and prolonged contact, and it's hard to practice social distancing with those, those sports. So, um, to talk about the number of participants in the, uh, in Phase two point five, which the governor had laid out, it states that, um, outdoor participation, or indoor participation can be, what's that? Outdoor participation can be fifty, fifty people, up to fifty people. Um, and the limited number of spectators can be fifty people. So if we had a baseball game, it's just one, we utilize one field, um, you could have up to, you know, of course, it's not gonna be fifty players, but you can have up to fifty participants. Um, and, um, with the total of, with fifty particip- participants and spectators. Um, so if it's more than one, so if we had a baseball and a soccer game at the same time, we would have to limit the, uh, partic- the spectators. Um, we can keep the participation, but limit the spectators for each, each individual sport.
I have a question. So you're saying that we can't have like fifty spectators and fifties, and they have to be fifty combined either way?
Yes, fifty combined. Uh, you can go to the next one. And indoor is a little different, uh, if you have a fire capacity of five hundred, it's, um, usually thirty percent of that. But, um, another, uh, people had questions about thirty percent of, of, of that was still too high, so, um, twenty-five is really the number that you want to look at for if you want to have an indoor, um, event, or sporting event, or class, or, um, program. Twenty-five per, per room. So.
Twenty-five per room?
Yeah.
Twenty, each room, you have, you got four rooms? Twenty-five per damage?
Twenty-five per room, or you can go thirty percent capacity. So, yeah.
You got four rooms, it'd be a hundred.
Yeah, if it's, if, yeah, if it's, if that hundred is, uh, thirty percent of your total capacity. You can have that. And you want to make sure that, of course, social distancing is, is, um, enforced. That's the main thing that the DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services, they really stressed is social distancing. If the programs are not social, uh, cannot be participated while social distancing, at six feet apart from each other, then they recommend not even doing it.
Well, how do you find out playing basketball then?
Yeah, so that, that's back to the high risk. That's what they said they recommend basketball, not, not doing it.
What you talking about with the clinics too? You saying, you doing with the clinics, they need the coaches?
Uh, yeah, well, I was flunking, well, yeah. So with the clinics, um, and I've discussed this with, uh, with my program coordinator, Coach Z. Um, we have came up, and we did this with tennis, and I'll show you guys later, cones separated with individuals at each cone, doing different drills. So they're separated six feet, more than, really more than six feet apart, and, um, they're able to do individual drills.
And you have a, a, a number of how many can be in there at once?
Yeah, so we prob- we, we really, no more than ten, ten kids.
They're quite right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with our budgets, but basically, with a Trump, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, if you start doing things inside of the gym, the, the budget that you have, is that gonna allow you to continuously buy cleaning materials to clean my, every group of people?
Um, it, it would make it challenging. Um, but that's something, I just wanted to present all the information to you guys, um.
Okay, I.
But, yeah, that, that, we will make it.
I want to ask. I really want to ask, because, uh- I really want to ask, because we're already distressed. You know, and if you open up, you have had today's district.
Right. Yeah, no, I understand totally. Yeah, I'm just presenting the information right now. Presenting the challenges, the strategic plans that we have, the restrictions, the guidelines, all that stuff. I'm just putting it out there. You guys want to make a decision, it's in your court, but I'm just advising pretty much of what to do, when we do. If we do, open up.
If you, I'm sorry, if you have the clinics, the clinics, could you, and this is just a thought, could you have like a coach that wants to keep his basketball team up to par? He come in there clinic, could we charge him? And take the money we get from there to use for extra cleaning supplies?
Yeah, so we have $40. We usually, we have a fee of $40 for, I think, rental for facility rent, or not facility, but the gymnasium rental. So yes, we will charge, we can charge. If we decide to open up for facility rentals, we can charge that amount for each coach to bring there. But I would limit it still to 10 players at max. And low spectator.
Now, I, are you saying?
Who's saying?
My question is not necessarily involving coaches and teams, but if someone desires to rent the center for a small family gathering, I suppose what you're saying would cover someone who comes in for a family gathering or play.
Yeah, so you, like I said, you can't have a small gathering up to 25 people. So that's what comes out of it. So if you wanted to do a facility rental, it does allow us through these guidelines and through this, what the Governor stated in his documentation, that you are allowed to have 25, up to 25 people if you want to do a rental for any, any event.
I know, Mr. Gray, when I talked to you earlier about this, you were saying with the fitness center that they would have to come in with their spray bottles.
Yeah.
Could you authorize that? I mean, could that happen too? When the people come in there, they just have to, you know, kind of clean up behind themselves? And then the staff will go behind them, but it wouldn't be all in detail? Could you do it like that, or would that be too much?
Are you talking about for the events?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if I would recommend that for the events. Cleaning up.
Okay, got you.
But she was saying, I might be on the next slide, but.
May I have permission to speak, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, did you?
No, nobody else, we is gonna get. I'm gonna, this is your, I see you shaking your head, and I'm kinda because the liability still falls on the town.
Yes.
Even though somebody else is bringing their, I think it's great if everybody's gonna do it. But the liability still falls on the town if something should happen to a citizen, a child, or something like that, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at. You have these options to do. However, we, it's going, and he's probably jumping ahead.
Yeah.
It's gonna take staff to do it. So like if you have a family reunion of 25 people, we'd have to monitor to make sure they were socially distancing and, and wearing masks and not, and how they're serving food as they serve them. And that's adding cost.
And what I would recommend, you kind of at your own risk, you fill out a liability, if you're gonna have a family gathering, that you fill out a liability for them stating that it's something, we're not, the town is not gonna be responsible for the liability and be sued. And it's a form that you fill out, because I've had to fill out one with my organization, what I'm doing. And they're responsible, and it's their liability if they want to help this gathering.
Yes, ma'am.
But the issue really isn't only the liability, it's also containing the pandemic.
Right.
That's the biggest issue.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the liability of getting sick.
So.
Right, but, but the bigger issue from a public policy perspective is managing the pandemic. And so, that is what this board has to take into consideration, whether or not it wants to be a greater risk factor or spread by having that issue. And I think what the Recreation Director is bringing for some things to consideration, I mean, as you start to fight with that. But the big issue is controlling the spread of the pandemic.
Yes, sir.
That's number one.
So that segues right into, in transition, right into my next slide? Uh, yeah, must signs, liability waivers in form. Must complete, everyone must complete a COVID-19 participation screening. We'll take temperatures. So as soon as you, first of all, you can't walk into the rec, you would not be able to walk into the rec center without a mask. We have to take your temperature, and then you'll sign your liability waiver form and your COVID-19 participation screening form. And then if, like, if you're a new, if you're a new, a new participant, or you haven't, of course, everyone hasn't been there in a while, we'll update your medical history on your forms from previously. And then each participant must bring their own equipment and towel and water. Go to the next slide. And before I get to this slide, I do want to mention something Alderman Jackson did, mentioned the fitness equipment, or fitness center. So that will be appointment only. Each person will have, I think, 50 minutes, we slotted, for each, for three people at a time to come into the fitness center. They have to do all of that, like I said, get your temperature checked, check, sign those forms, and then we will issue a spray bottle for them. So I've seen other, this is research from other fitness centers. They issue a spray bottle with a towel. They will have to spray, every time they use a piece of equipment, they have to spray, spray down that equipment each time they get off of it. On and off, excuse me, before and after the usage of the equipment. And we will have the equipment roped off or taped off. We'll have it sectioned out, so every other treadmill, so one treadmill may be open, the other one may be closed, the other one may be, things like that. As to limit or enhancing social distancing. So, we already stated that the indoor group sessions and gatherings will not seat 25 indoor, 50 outdoor. We will allow 45 minutes of cleanup time in between each session for us to make sure everything is thoroughly cleaned and sanitized. We will provide hand washing stations or really hand sanitizer. And of course, first aid kits will be available for any minor scrapes and bruises.
Excuse me, hold on.
Go ahead.
Mayor, please.
Oh, sorry, maybe there's some.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Maybe you can wait till the end, but are you gonna mention Mendoza Park in your presentation?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Severe injuries, this is pretty much our safety guideline, so severe injuries, of course, this is normal stuff. Definitely seek medical attention if EMS is needed. Unless EMS is needed, excuse me. And each coach and volunteer will be required to watch a COVID-19 sports participation safety video. So we'll set that up for the coaches. They'll have to come in before they even participate. This will be a part of their their registration for coaching and volunteer. They have to sit down and watch, we have like a two-minute video that teaches you how to deal with the kids during the, or deal with your participants during the COVID-19. All right. So, other actions of safety, at six feet apart, wear face coverings. For all spectators and all, all, no, well, specifically for spectators, I don't know if I mentioned that. We will designate and arrange equipment. I mentioned that before, we'll have each equipment taped off. Or every other equipment taped off, so that'll allow social distancing. Group, group classes and activities should be spaced out six feet apart. And we're not allowing anybody to fist pump or high-five or shake hands or anything like that. We're encouraging them, definitely do not do that. We want to limit that as much as possible. Recreation staff will disinfect all equipment that's here, that's mainly for the fitness center. Our staff is also will be constantly wiping down, cleaning the facility, cleaning the workspace area. Of course, my staff, right now currently, we have, they come in, they have to wear masks. And they're wiping down recreational areas that are not used at that time, that will not be used. And we will not have like water fountains that will be taped off. Not, not allowed to use, you have to bring your own water bottle. Well, it's recommended that you have to bring your own water bottle, so. And if we had town-sponsored events, of course, it would have to be limited to 25 people indoor. But we had town-sponsored events, which require meals. We would have those meals prepackaged in boxes or bags for each individual to grab. Or will be delivered to each individual. We'll have water labeled, if we had, gave bottles out, we have to label the water with disposable cups. And this is different, I know it's different from our normal buffet style or family style, where we come and get our home food laid out on the table. But this is a precaution that we have to take because of the pandemic.
Question here. Could you, I mean, could mean the safest way for this item here, if it just forbids a period, I mean, if you state that this would not be done, then nobody would expect to come here and get a bag?
Right, right.
Alderman, so.
Thank you. So, since you're talking about this and you stated, but are you recommending, you said if they have, if somebody wanted to have a gathering, family gathering, 25 people, are you recommending the kitchen be open and utilized as well?
No, I'm saying prepackaged before you.
Right, I'm talking about for the people who, their food, like if I want to have a gathering for 25 people, how do I, am I, are you gonna utilize the kitchen or is it not on here, so we're gonna?
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no utilization of kitchen. You have to bring your prepackaged items with you. Yes, ma'am.
So I bring my own food in for my 25 people?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, tennis program, we have did a limited tennis program. We started two weeks ago. And we had no more than 12 participants per session. And what happened was each instructor, parent, spectator, and participant, they had their temperatures taken. Parents signed liability waivers, the liability waiver form. They filled out the COVID-19 screening form. And each one, they had everybody, the parents, the participants, the instructors, had to watch a video before they participated. They were equally socially, they were socially distant, six feet apart or more. Everyone had to, required to wear a mask for this. And I think it went really well for our tennis program, which is almost all you can do really, kind of, but. We have a pictures, go to the next slide. Our pictures are kind of showing you how we had it set up. So you see the instructors and the kids have masks on. We had cones set up, like I stated before, the cones are set out to socially distance the kids. Also, we had, if the kids wanted to leave bags, sit bags down, we had cones set up for them to, six feet apart for them to place their bags. They brought their own water. We had sanitizer there as well. And so it was a real simple, simple clinic. But it was, it was pretty, pretty good. Any questions?
I would give no gap. Alderman, so.
I've, I've seen the clinic, you know, and it looked, it looked real good. But I don't see how you can do anything with just finding the gym.
Yeah, no.
It's like, you get the guy came in there with the cleaning materials. Your people have to clean because they know what needs to be cleaned. So that would be the downfall.
Got you.
I'm also looking at, I think next month, you got the voting people coming in.
Yeah.
Have we talked to them about this cleaning? I feel like trying to get more days with them or one or more and let them know with your requirements. And not as a big boss, but you on the front.
Right.
So you need to.
Yeah, coordinate. Yeah, we've been talking briefly with them.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, talking about basketball and how many inside and outside. Now, I know this basketball court states pretty, who's responsible to make sure that we don't have so many people out there because it's always crowded, as well as the vehicles over there last Friday parked on the court? And who's responsible to make sure that that, is that no longer the town? I mean, mine, not mine, but the taxpayers in Williston West, basketball is closed and it's still closed. So are they open around here? Is this still considered as recreational?
Um, saying, of course, outdoor courts?
Yeah.
Right here? Um, right now, we have them closed off. No one should be over there.
They still playing on.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah, we.
I think the police ran over there.
Yeah, we, we, we.
Over 50 out there one day.
Yeah, we have to coordinate better, maybe we can coordinate better with the police. That's a good assessment, too. I know we have one staff member, staff, he goes out there often and checks, I think he goes every 30 minutes.
I don't think he was around.
Okay.
Quite a few people.
Because our contact.
And Friday, there was a vehicle parked out there.
Oh, really?
A white vehicle parked on the basketball court, and I came down here to get my agenda.
Okay.
Can those rims be removed from those back booms?
Yes, sir.
I mean, if you remove the rim, they got nothing to hook.
Right.
Because they can be removed, they can be put back at the appropriate time.
Yes, sir.
Alderman, okay.
Uh, sir, at the time, those rims changed. You might be throwing basketball up there, probably won't come back down. And you don't constantly, you like to find anybody else. Anyway, I think it's been about three weeks since you changed that stuff up.
Yeah.
Like it goes back, you know, you know, people see over there now all the, the police, they go through the academy, and they get over there and they work stuff. And then they take off.
Jay, I want you to elaborate more about this cleaning up the equipment, the special clean that's required for the.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, Mendoza Park, they get to that. So Mendoza Park and other park equipment. Yeah, we can open Mendoza Park, it is allowed to open Mendoza Park. That will be, I recommend not opening Mendoza Park because of the personnel, lack of personnel that we have. I know weekends can get hectic. That playground, like you said, the playground equipment, first of all, it has to be inspected. It would have to be inspected before we even put anybody on there. Also, that playground is really, really used heavily, is heavily utilized. Any, any time of, any evening, especially weekends, you have a lot of families down there using the playground equipment. And then also, we would have to monitor or supervise the, or get a closer eye on the shelters, the shelter space, so. That would open up for people to, you know, they're not gonna come and try to register. If they know they can't do it anyway, they're not gonna come and try to register at the Recreation Department. They're not gonna come to the rec center, so they probably just set up shop and, you know, have birthday parties, family reunions, we want to limit that, so. That's my signal.
And one other thing, please, please, save the waiver. And one other thing, please, please save those waivers that people sign.
Yes, sir.
Matter of fact, find a safe place here that they can be stored just in case.
Yes, sir.
Three years from now, somebody come for you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, concern?
Just got a, a comment if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, this is nice and thank you for bringing it to attention.
You're welcome.
Uh, because we know last week, I guess, the last week the governor stated that we moved it forward. Mr. Jerry, I want to, uh, congratulate you, please let your staff know that the medium, cause I've always been a, an advocate and always said something about it, but if I can say something negative, I want to say something positive. The medium in the grass in the town of Spring Lake looks awesome, it looks nice, it's clean and it's cut. Coming into Spring Lake as well as the medium that I had talked to you once before about and the grass continues to be cut, so please let your staff know that the citizens appreciate it. Thank you. As well as Mendoza Park being cut.
We will entertain one more motion. Mayor Prokhor.
I move that we adjourn.
Alderman O'Gara.
That's a good motion.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign of nay. Aye, aye.